Mr. Chair.
Hey, alrighty. Good afternoon. This is the official meeting of the Public Safety Committee meeting. The date is Tuesday, the thirteenth, October 13th, 2020. It's about two minutes to one, 1:00 p.m. For the record, I am Fred Richardson, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee. And we also have present the two other members of the committee, councilmembers Gina Gregory and John Williams. We also have with us councilmembers Beth Witt, Joel Davis, CJ Small. Do we have anybody, any other councilmembers? I think that's it for councilmembers. Thank all of you for...
She is not present. She fell off somehow. Oh, different phone number. Sorry, Gina.
Yeah, Gina is here. We also have City Clerk and her staff with us. City Attorney Chris Aldis with us. And from the administration, can you identify yourself on the message? So we know who we have from the administration.
Nick, you there?
Yeah, Nick's here.
Jim Delap is here.
Okay. Do we have the traffic engineer with us?
That's White is on also.
Okay, alrighty. I think, I think they can go from there. How many do we, did we, do we have signed up to speak?
We have one, two, three. We have three people, excuse me. We have three people signed in.
Okay. Well, the issues before us is the ordinance, to main chapter six of the city code to establish policies and procedures pertaining to closure of streets, ades and public right of ways. But today, we're going to take up street closures, not ades and public right of ways. We are, we're gonna take ades and public right of ways. We're not gonna take up street calming today. We're gonna take up closure of streets, ades and public right of ways today. We're gonna start off by listening to those three people. Can you call them in, let them give it? We're gonna give each one of them three minutes. We let them state their name and address. And then they will be able to say whatever it is that they would like to say.
Okay.
Yes.
Could I ask for just a moment? And maybe either Chris or Joel or whoever has got the authority on the definition to find, just because being that this is being videoed and it's gonna go into perpetuity, whatever, that we can define vacation enclosure? And what, what is actually what you're talking about in that term? Before we, before we could go forward?
Okay, well, I'll let Chris. Chris, would you go over, because those definitions are upfront.
Yeah, but I think it's important for the viewing audience that we...
Okay.
Yes, sir. Street vacations of a public right of way, well, let's not even call it street. Let's just call it vacations of a public right of way, which could be a street, could be an alley. It could be a street that has been established on paper or on a map that isn't actually built or, you know, paved or whatever on the ground yet. Those are all considered public right of ways. Those can be vacated pursuant to a process that is set forth under the state law and has also been, the council recently passed a separate standalone ordinance setting forth additional criteria in which the council's permission would be granted for such a thing. That is a permanent, basically transfer of title to the, the underlying dirt to the abutting landowners. So, for example, if you've got a street and you got one person on one side, one person on the other, and it's closed just right in front of their houses, title to the land would be permanently vested up to the halfway point in each of those two property owners. A closure is, can be a non-permanent thing. The city has the power to close streets, you know, pretty much whenever you want to for various things temporarily. Sometimes they're closed for construction. Sometimes they're closed for special events like Mardi Gras or, you know, Dolphin Street events and things like that. And that, there's not a state law really that, that addresses that. And it's, the council has, you know, generally has control of the streets of the city and has the authority to do that in general. And the administration certainly does. They've got a traffic department and close things, you know, quite regularly. So those are, basically, the difference is one's permanent and one's not permanent. Now, if a street were closed, it could be closed for a long time. But the city would always have the right to go back in and reopen it, should it be necessary for some reason. So that's kind of the difference. And this ordinance that we're talking about is a proposal to set up some more criteria for when that sort of thing on closures would occur.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr....
Thank you very much. Let me say before you call to anyone that there is no application for us to close any street. We are amending, we are amending the law. And it's, it's a chance for citizens to say, we are not picking on no particular neighborhood, this ordinance for the entire city. But it isn't, it is a chance for a citizen to say how they would like for that to be handled. If it was their neighborhood, how, how they would like to see it handled. And we can take that into consideration. But there is no application before us at this time to close any street in the city of Mobile. So with that in mind, Mayor Kirk, can you call our first person?
Okay, our first speaker will be Mr. Scott Jones.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Jones.
Good morning or afternoon, I guess it is now. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes. Can you give us your, glad to have you with us today. Give us your name, address. And you're gonna have three minutes to, to say whatever it is you want to say about the ordinance.
I'm Jones, in Mobile, Alabama, 3668. This is really more of a three-minute issue. Is this, there's anything with this ordinance that need to be discussed? Three minutes, I can barely even start. But the primary scope of the problem that this committee and council need to address is our neighborhoods viable or to the city? If not, go ahead and push these ordinance through as they are because it won't matter. If care about fine is where people live and interact with each other. The rest, and I pulled this down from a law firm that was published in June of 2019. The dangers residents face in neighborhoods primarily is from cut-through traffic. And those dangers are defined as high volumes of traffic, ingestion, noise, and lack of safety. You cannot in the same breath say that everybody has access to all the roads and at the same time say you're gonna take care of neighborhoods. The two don't go to the front. And our neighborhood defines that. There's got to be a dividing line. This ordinance has no metrics in it. There's nothing in this ordinance that defines where that scope of problem begins. What is it? When is somebody gonna come to you and say, we have a problem? And the city will agree that that's a problem because there's a standard set as to traffic volumes in a residential area in Mobile? That's not defined. We've been discussing that for the three months we've been discussing this ordinance. And until we start looking at that, then we're not gonna resolve this. There is no definition of a residential road versus a normal road of trafficability like, you know, University or Old Shell Road or Airport Boulevard or Hillcrest. There's a huge difference in the makeup of a residential street and a normal street that people transition from point A to point B on instead of going to their houses. I have yet to hear that discussed from the traffic. And that needs to be addressed. This ordinance still requires everything to be placed on the residents to resolve the issue. This is not a residential problem. This is a city problem. And how the demographics change in the city and the volumes, the universities, et cetera. That is a city issue. So why are you placing the burden back on the neighborhoods to relegate and, and to fix that problem? Cities such as, or states even, that have addressed this with cut-through packages. I mean, they have in-place packages. Louisiana, Virginia, California, Michigan, Ohio. All of these states have cities that have a traffic engineering department that have a toolkit for cut-through traffic that they address. Once you hit a standard, then that residence goes to the traffic engineering department. They mandate the problem. They discuss the problem. They identify, they validate the problem, and then they take action. I haven't seen that acted in Mobile yet. And we've been working this for well over a year. Two years, three years. Nothing like that exists. This ordinance doesn't even come close to discussing that. Rosswood was shut down in February. If you put this ordinance against the Rosswood vacation, Rosswood would have never come close to being able to meet the standard set forth in this ordinance. I challenge you to do it. It couldn't be done. No chance. So, you know, until we can look at this, I would recommend, highly recommend, we take a step back. Let's get something feasible. If you really care about the integrity, the safety and the security of the neighborhoods, and you want to take care of that, let's get this right because it's got huge implications long-term. Not today, not tomorrow, five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. We've gotta get this right. And what's on the table right now would be a travesty for neighborhoods in the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Can we have the next one?
The next person would be Mr. Fulgram. Mr. Fulgram, are you on? Mr. Fulgram? He's muted.
We can move him over. Well, maybe move down to the next one and maybe he'll be...
Okay, he's unmuted. Mr. Fulgram?
Yes, ma'am, here I am.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry about that. I had it muted.
Yeah, you'll have three minutes to, to speak to the council. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Henry Fulgram. I live at 5917 Shenandoah Road North, Mobile, 36608. And I thank you, members of the committee, for allowing us to speak and certainly appreciate that very much. And I do want to say a couple of things. I've been a resident of our neighborhood, which is Ridgeville, for over 30 years. It's maintained itself. It's been a beautiful location. And I happen to have two, two of my family members that have two other houses in the neighborhood as well. So I speak for them as well as myself. So for three family, family units that are currently residents. I did want to echo a few things that Mr. Jones mentioned. I'm not as familiar with the other areas that he spoke of. But I have noticed quite a bit in our neighborhood, the cut-through traffic that has increased dramatically, mainly because of the growth, I believe, from South Alabama and the ease of coming through off of Airport Boulevard through the Ridgeville subdivision and utilizing the East Road exit. And I think what, what Mr. Jones and others in our neighborhood were really, you know, trying to find is some way to, to curb that or stop that. We, you know, are not recommending that, that a particular road be closed permanently. What we're looking for is a way to, to just curb some of that traffic that's coming through. And, and all of us at times see that if, either on Cumberland or, or Shenandoah Road West. So, so I agree with him. We do need a full system that does it. I did read through this, this ordinance that came out, the one previously and the one that came this morning. It doesn't seem to, to address things that we were trying to address. And I would recommend that and would be glad to help any way I could to gather additional information that, that could be considered by the council and the mayor's office. But the, you know, the study that, that was paid for by our Board of Owners, you know, clearly shows the increase that, that occurred, you know, in the first quarter of this year. And, you know, we hate to see that get back to that point, which is where it is, where it's going now. And I think will just only will increase. So I would like to recommend that the, the council look at ways that we could curb traffic that is utilizing a neighborhood as a cut-through process. And, but that's the main thing I'm trying to do. And can I yield the rest of my time to Mr. Jones if he would like to take it?
How much time? How much, Mayor Kirk?
That's it, that's it. That's, well, that's all.
Yeah, that's also too, yeah, your time.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, one more?
No, that's it. He just had two, Mr. Fulgram had two devices connected.
Oh, okay, okay. Alright, well, let, let me just say that our mission here today is to, is to determine what, what it is that, that a neighborhood is gonna have to do in order for the street to be closed. Cut-throughs and all of that, that's we, that's not what we, we are here for. What, what it is that a neighborhood is gonna be compelled to do for a street to be closed. Now, it's a section in this ordinance that's gonna challenge us, it challenges an applicant to say, name all you have done to, to, to stop the, solve your problem before coming here and asking to close the street. So that's when you go to speed humps, one-way streets, a whole bunch of other things is when we get to that section. Are the things that neighborhoods can do? And maybe, maybe that's something that, that our traffic engineer is gonna need to have to say so. And now, but we are challenged, challenged to come up with an order to say what it is that a, that a neighborhood is gonna have to do in order for the street to be closed. And as I said, it's a section in this, to state for, for the neighborhood to say what, what, what they did before taking this, this particular action. Okay, well, do, do we want to hear from our traffic engineer at this time?
I'd be curious. I'd certainly be curious.
Ms. White?
Fred, could you repeat that? I can't hear you very well.
Okay, so we have, we have heard from two citizens. We're dealing with street closures. What it is that a neighborhood is gonna have to do in order for the city to close a street? And based on the two we have heard, they are concerned about cut-throughs, this, that, and the other. So it seems to me that they are saying if it's a way to slow the traffic down, a curtail of traffic, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't at all be concerned about closing the street if there was another way to control the traffic. So we wanna know, do you have any suggestions and ideas of how we would handle that? What we, what we can do?
Certainly, cut-through traffic. I think we need to distinguish cut-through traffic and traffic calming are solved two completely different ways. Most of your vertical deflection traffic calming methods do nothing to ease cut-through traffic. So when you, when you're addressing cut-through traffic, you need to have methods that actually divert traffic. So there are, there are a number of things that we could do that doesn't really entail completely closing a street to redirect that traffic, make it more difficult for cut-through traffic to use those neighborhoods. But it would have to be considered on like a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. Most easily, those are done in grid neighborhoods when you get out into the further areas of Mobile where the neighborhoods have developed more into those circular patterns, the winding streets and things like that. It's a little difficult, but not undoable. So there are other meth, methods to ease up cut-through traffic.
Jennifer, real quick, this is Jim Delap. I think early, the early part of that question by Councilman Richardson was, what's the, because we're talking about street closures. That was, that's the topic of discussion unless, you know, and, and so I'd ask, what's the process by which someone would go through seeking a closure? Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes, we, 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 there is a process in this ordinance. And I want to know whether or not, I don't know what, Jennifer, have you, have you looked at the proposed ordinance?
I have, I've looked at it.
Okay, is there anything, anything that comes in over and above what's in the, that we can do over and above than what's in the ordinance? That could help us?
I think you could be a little, the ordinance itself doesn't really outline what the, what the process is. I have, I have a hard time looking, looking at that and then knowing what it's trying to accomplish. You know, what are you trying to accomplish with a street closure? Is, I mean, is this temporary ones that, you know, like for street parties and things like that that we normally deal with? Long-term, are you talking more long-term closures? But I just don't see a clear path of what the citizen would have to do if they wanted to just come close a street for, there's not, I mean, there's nothing to put any proof on why they're closing it. What's the, what purpose does it drive? And then how are you gonna accomplish that closure? How's that gonna be accomplished?
I think section C in the ordinance defines what, you know, what a, what, you know, citizens who are petitioning us, what they're gonna have to do is in section C.
Councilman?
Yes.
This is Flo Kessler. I think, I think the point that Jennifer is, is making isn't so, yes, there, there is a lot of detail on procedure. But I think that she's focusing more on what problems are appropriate to solve through a street closure. You know, what? We've heard a couple of citizens talk about cut-through traffic. And, and I think everybody agrees that street closure is not, is not the only way and often not a good way to, to address cut-through traffic because any traffic that's cut off one road just relocates onto another road. So it's not, it's, it's not, it's not a full-bodied resolution. So I think what Jennifer is saying is that, is that the ordinance kind of gives the steps, but it doesn't give the, the substance of, of when a street closure would be appropriate.
Okay, but...
If I could add one more point that Jennifer and I had discussed earlier, and this relates to a comment that was made earlier about, you know, what, what is, what roads are appropriate for street closures? The, the ordinance in the main paragraph verse C as in cat just talks about residentially zoned areas. Residentially zoned areas could be R1 through R3. And, and with that broad a definition, you could be talking about a street closure on a major artery like Hillcrest or Airport. So in that sense, too, that was another thing Jennifer and I had talked about that, that there are some further specifications that are required.
Mr. Chair, whenever it's appropriate.
Sweet, come on, come over here.
Thank you very much. If we listen to Mr. Jones, he's saying what, what Flo is saying, and he's saying what Jennifer's saying. And what I will say is, for, for four years, no longer than that, Kobe was still here. How long goes that? Seven years. I've been trying to address this issue, actively trying to address this issue. And what we do is we're, we put it back on the residents. You gotta do this, 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 and this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and this. And then, then maybe. And what we have been asking for about a year is for the administration to engage and, and help us with this. Because for, for Ms. White to come now and say, well, your ordinance is no good. The ordinance has been around, this draft has been around for how many months? In some form or fashion. And we need the administration's help. We need the experts' help. But what the residents need is the city's help. We're not possibly gonna address every single possible issue. If somebody wants to close down their street for the, for Halloween party, they call their council person, they call the mayor's office. And then they, they say, we'd like to close it down. They say, cool, you gotta do these things? Good. That's an administrative action. What we're really talking about, I think, is closing a street for a certain period of time. It may be undefined, but for a certain part, it's not permanent. Yeah, but it's being done for a perceived issue. And so let me go back to my note here real quick that I was just writing. And that is that the residents identify a street in a perceived issue. It may be very real to them, but it's still, it's still a perception of a, of an issue. Getting consensus, the 70% petition? I'm not gonna argue whether or not it's right or wrong, but, but they do need to get some consensus. But then, I believe that it's time for the city to respond to the citizens' request. And the city do the study to determine the real problem. And I don't know that we can regulate this entirely. But then, the city, the experts, through, through that study and through staff... But then the city, the experts, through, through that study and through staff action, determine a resolution. Um, it's um, it's, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for representation. It's certainly frustrating for, for residents who are experiencing volumes of traffic that the design and makeup and size of roads was never intended to carry. Um, is passing through a residential area. Uh, and sixty percent of the people that are using that road are not in that neighborhood. It's just simply, it's about design. And I see you, Joel, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna give it about another thirty seconds. Somehow we got to talk about what was the purpose of that road based on its design? And what is the impact now uh and, and how we can resolve? But it's all got to go back to the administration. Um, if we try to solve this through a bunch of words, I just don't think we're going to get there. Um, I want to get there, but I don't think a law is going to get there. We need the administration to help us with a policy uh and procedure on how residents interact with the city to resolve their issue. Thank you.
Joel?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I concur with much of what John has said, especially in the latter part. Um, you know, the reason we started down this road to begin with was because the existing legislation was vague and uncertain. And, and that's been proved by the fact that we took the existing legislation and divided it into four pieces. Um, and, and, and so what we're trying to do is make it clear. The other thing we're trying to do is balance competing interests, which is always difficult, which is the competing interest between the neighborhoods who want safe, quiet neighborhoods, without a lot of cut through traffic, and the public's ability to use the roads that they paid for and maintain. Um, and, and the, and what I've discovered in this is every situation is different. It, you, you can't, you can't use a cookie cutter. Every single situation is different. Now, my understanding is, going back to the roads, Jennifer can say whether this is correct or not. But, but I, my understanding is that roads are built to standards that are applicable to their intended purpose. And that there are different standards for different kinds of roads. So if you're going out and you're building a major thoroughfare, it's built to a different standard than a neighborhood road. And when neighborhood roads become thoroughfares, they weren't designed to be. That's a problem. So I think, I think, I, I, and to go back to what Mr. Jones has said about, about data and statistics and metrics, I think that's important. It, you know, i- in all of this, if we've got, if we've got a road that was built to a, you know, that, that's a two-lane residential road, and now it's got X traffic on it, then, then the, then it's, I think it's incumbent upon the city to take certain steps to address that issue, whatever that, whatever it is. So I, I, I think that I think, I, I concur with, with John, and I see a lot of others of you nodding your heads is uh, we, a big part of this is what standard does the road build to? What was its intended purpose and how is it now being used? Those kinds of things.
Can I comment?
Yes.
This, thank you. Um, I'm encouraged by this level of conversation and particularly what Ms. White was talking about when she said there are tools. There are ways to reroute traffic because that's basically what you're talking about when you're talking about the cut through. It's how do you reroute that so that it's not encouraged in a, on a residential corridor that was not equipped or is a selling point for our neighborhoods? And um stability to our neighborhoods is very, very important to keep people living in our city, investing in our neighborhoods. When you, when you have negatives, people leave, that can leave, and those that get stuck stay back and their investments are lost. But the safety of everyone is paramount. And cut through traffic, additional traffic in a residential environment creates safety issues. We, we um a- as council people, we have this problem throughout our city, but it is unique per neighborhood because how did it get there? Um, how do we resolve it? And we do need our professionals because we're not the only city that struggles with this. Um, and I, I, I hope that we would rest this right now until we can work hand in hand with our administration to let citizens know how they can go about rerouting traffic, getting their neighborhood back to a standard that they originally invested in, but due to changes, due to whatever created it to become a cut through. It's, it's not a value tool to have a cut through. We know this. And so um I, I would recommend, and, and it's great that we separated it because like Joel said, it needed to be separated because they're different creatures. But um again, I'm very encouraged by listening to our traffic director when um I'm hearing that there are tools out there, there are ways to resolve. And maybe it isn't a full closure, maybe it's a closure during certain hours. I mean, there's all kinds of things out there. And it, it's really time that we pay attention to our residents and um have a city that is responsive and our job is to advocate for them and to bring them to the right people. So I, I, I don't, I, I don't see how we can legislate this. I do agree with um Mr. Williams on that aspect of it.
I would like to call all of our attention to Roman nu- numero three, Roman number three. Uh, to paragraph D. And I think this is where the, where the challenge is. When an application is filed, this is what they got, what this ordinance is saying. Describe all prior efforts to alleviate the traffic situation, including communications with the city staff, that would be the traffic engineer, the city staff, and describe how such efforts have not obtained the desired effect. So the last thing we want to do is close the street. So they're saying, now you want us to close the street. But show us all of the various things you have done to solve this problem. Not come and say, I just want to close my street because uh they're driving too fast. Then show us what effort you have done to slow the traffic down. This, this one here is, is challenging us to put in here the various things that we can do that can help a neighborhood control the traffic without having to close the street. So I don't think we need to walk away from this. I think whatever tools there are, uh whatever tools that the traffic engineer can share with us, I think it ought to be put in here and that we ought to, these are the things that, that need to be done. Uh, one way, o- one, uh, one way at a certain hour. We need to, it's a whole number of things we can do without closing the street. And I think, I'm not opposed to closing the street if that's all we can do. But we need, who, the applicant is going to have to come and show us what did you, what did you do? What, what steps did you take to resolve the problem before it got to this? And I think that there still need to be uh, that need to be what they ought to do. They ought to be able to come to us and say, these are things we tried and a lot of that we would like for to pursue street closure. And I think, but I think all these other efforts ought to be, I don't think we need to just, just close the book until let's walk away.
No, 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 no. But Mr. Chair, what, what is it that a resident would share with us that we wouldn't already know? It's kind of like the bank saying, you got to prove to me you gave me all this money before I ever, well, it's going in your front door. Um, it, there's nothing that a resident can do on a street by themselves other than park their cars out in the street, and I don't know that at an angle um or put rocks out there uh so people have to go around them. Um, but I don't know that we want to encourage that. Um, not that I would ever encourage something like that. But the um, the, the, the fact is, they're not authorized to do anything to the street without our permission. So, so what would they have done?
Well, can we change that to say that, that, that the, the traffic, city's traffic department? Somebody going to have, if they can't do it, whoever can do it. The responsibility is obviously put on them.
What we need is the administration to put together a policy or, or if they would wish, an ordinance that um, that we bless. That's the way we normally do. I, I've never seen us come up with something that's been just absolutely excellent when we have dreamed up all this stuff on our own. And quite frankly, I think we dreamed up most of this on our own, and I think it's a great effort. It, it is certainly trying to address the issue. Uh, but, but we should not have the ordinance on a, on a resident when it's a city issue.
Well, can we, can we task the tra- uh traffic engineer uh to go back and bring, and bring us a recommendation of the things that uh, that need to be done prior to closing the street? And that it, once the application is given to the city, then the city need to tell us these are the things that have been done.
Uh, Chairman, this is Flo. May I ask you for a minute? Um, I, I think that uh Jennifer and I were probably a little um, were expecting to be able to discuss the traffic calming devices uh today as well. And one reason that we didn't provide written uh responses to the, to the ordinances is that uh it seemed to us, what I think I'm hearing the council say right now, and I think we're all in agreement, that uh, that the tra- that the whole policy should start with traffic engineering. Um, and uh, uh Jim Delap and Jennifer and I spoke last week about developing a policy on when, you know, when traffic diversion is appropriate, what kinds of traffic calming devices are, are appropriate, maybe looking at getting some basic designs for certain traffic calming devices that, that could be sort of a menu. And, and very much in keeping with what the council is saying right now, look at a lot of alternatives to, that, that could be presented and considered for, as you were all saying, very individual neighborhood by neighborhood situations. Um, but you know, we were just uh challenged by the concept of having this done as an ordinance because, eh, you know, as you know, to be enforceable and specific and ordinance is giving like numbers of feet and, and, you know, certain whiffs, and those aren't all uniformly applicable. So in, in our view, uh, the traffic engineering department is better able to adopt a case-by-case approach uh through a more versatile type of policy. And that is what we were talking about.
I think they said the council is going to need to close the street. I think the traffic engineer can present to, you know, present to us the policy, recommend to us a policy to use. But I think when it comes down to closing the street, that ought to be uh, unless it's temporary, that ought to be the city council's responsibility.
That's a vacation. It already, you've been, you've already.
No, I'm not talking about vacation.
No, no, he's talking, he's talking about if it's going to be an indefinite closure.
Oh, okay. All right. But no ownership?
No, no ownership, no.
And the city can open at any time.
No, I agree with Fred. If it's going to be an indefinite closure, then it needs to come to the city council.
Yeah.
At some point, but I, 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 I concur with Flo and I guess Jennifer and Colonel Delap. It, I mean, other, other than closing streets, it, all of this would best be handled administratively.
Yes.
Through policies adopted by the city. Uh, and so my suggestion would be that we, that we turn this whole thing over to uh, that we turn this whole thing over to Ms. Kessler and Ms. White and Colonel Delap and uh set this aside, that both.
I want our lawyer to be in that too.
Or, yeah, and Chris, absolutely. Uh, but, but set it aside for sixty days or ninety days or something and, and give them time to come back to us.
Uh, don't disagree with that.
Fred?
Yes.
Fred, yeah. I've been one of the ones nodding my head, and uh I appreciate Flo and Jennifer getting involved because really what they're talking about doing is what we have talked about doing and meeting all along. And I think that also meets what Mr. Jones has said, which is, he called it a toolbox. Well, you know, we may call it a policy, but it's the same sort of thing so that if residents contact us and say, hey, we really like to close our street for whatever their reason is, what do we do? Then we say, you go talk to Jennifer White, traffic engineering, and then we turn them over to her as far as what the steps are, what their reasoning is, and let them work through it. But as you said, if then the idea is to close the street on an indefinite time period, then yeah, it comes to us and we agree or not. I mean, the indefinite time period can be a year, it can be twenty years, you know, we don't know what it's going to be. But yeah, I think that's it. Um, I don't know if anybody on public safety needs to have any involvement at all on working with, with Jennifer and traffic, just so that we better understand what's going on and to have input or not. Uh, you know, I think we need to at least be familiar with what the policy is, like we were with um traffic calming. You know, we always had this certain thing on traffic calming. We sent documents out, you know, we sent documents out to the neighborhood. The uh residents had to sign, then we sent it back to engineering. They would check and make sure that, you know, everybody lived on the street. Then they would go out and they would look and see whether or not they felt like traffic calming was needed and, and where. You know, how many, and then they would come back to us basically for funding. So I think it's very similar to what we've really done in, in the past, but we just didn't know where to send residents, you know? So we definitely have to have that policy or that toolkit in place so that when residents do come to us, we know what to tell them.
I think there's going to be like zoning where shit and her group held that we are not over that bother with them, but it's got to come to us to approve. Let Jennifer and them put together a plan and bring it to us, and we're going to get it and, and, and all of us going to come back in here to see, um, you know, are we going to accept all of it? Do we want to change some of it? What we're going to do?
Yeah, and I think there are a lot of, I think there are a lot of questions that residents have, and I think we have too, as to what's the difference in what we're trying to accomplish here? Are we trying to keep traffic from cutting through? Or are we trying to slow traffic down? And, and those are apparently, according to Jennifer, you know, two different things.
We're not trying, we're, today, we're not trying to do any of that.
I know, I'm just saying. Just saying.
But the, the, the point is, when they, they file the application, they got to state the reason. Why do you want the street closed? If they said that it's traffic, it's coming to our neighborhood too fast, there are ways to slow it down with that closing the street.
Yeah, and, and I think that's what they'll do when they get together with Jennifer and her team is to, is to figure it out. They may say it's one thing and think they have to have a closure when in reality it may be something else and they can get away with some sort of traffic calming device. But Betis and John and everybody else who has said that it, and it's a city problem, you know, we don't need to put this burden on the residents because if it is deemed a problem and we, traffic engineering agrees, yes, there's a problem here, it needs to be fixed, then yeah, it's a city problem, and the city needs to expend funds in order to re- resolve the city's problem, whether it's one little neighborhood or many, many neighborhoods, it's still, it's still the city.
Okay, so uh all we need now, if we want to uh pass this on to the administration and let them get back to us. So uh, uh Gina, you want to make a motion on what we do?
Um, well, do we need to lay this over? Do we need to, what do we need to do with this particular draft?
Can y'all hear me?
Oh, yeah, that's the mayor. Okay.
Yes. So um, there evidently is a change of mindset of what the council wants. Because having been here for seven years and listened to conversations over multiple times about Armont and other closures that have uh been brought forth, on every single occasion except for Rosswood, um, this council has voted to not close the street. And so to say that the administration needs. And so to say that the administration needs to fix this problem, uh, I don't disagree with, we can be part of the solution. But until we know what the council wants, um, you know, we're, this is just a certain amount of time we have to spend on problems. And so uh, we will engage with you. But if the mindset is already what it's been in the past, is that we're not going to allow it, that that public funds pay for all the streets in the city mobile, and I'm quoting a city councillor. Then we have no right to close it because these are public funds and everybody has a right to come and go as they please. So, uh, I'm I'm sensitive to the the challenge. Uh, it is unique for every situation. What you have in Ridgefield, you could have the same uh, uh, problem explained by people on Hillwood Road, okay? So we will look at this and we will engage with you. But if we find out that we had an impasse and all we do is we're trying to get to a point where we have a policy and then it gets continued to be killed when it's voted to be voca- vacated, then please don't point at us and say, this is an administration problem to solve this, because it is not an administrative problem. It is a city problem, Gina, but uh, I don't appreciate uh, the the point that we have been the problem. Uh, because we have not, we have been a part of every situation, of every neighborhood, trying to close the street, but knowing at the end of the day that it was not going to prove, be proved by the city council. So anyway, we'll work with you, do the best we can.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the 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 comment there. Let let me say this, we don't have the tools to 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 figure out the things, all of the things that can be done prior to closing the street so so we wouldn't have to close the street. We don't have the toolkits to say, if we do X, Y, and Z, we're closing the street for some particular reason. Uh, if if there's too much traffic, they're driving too fast, there ought to be a toolkit that we can pull something out to correct that problem without having to close the street. We don't have that, 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 that is not available to us and we are asking the administration to take a look at it. And the last thing we want to do is close the street. It's it's to give the, give the, the communities uh, some, come up with some options and some things that they can, that 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 the city can do or whoever can do it. Um, to to prevent us from closing the street. For for instance, on 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 West Street in my neighborhood, over there near Murphy House School, uh, there was complaint about uh, people coming to waste traffic speeding through the neighborhood at the same time. They want the street closed, what what time? They finally told me that it's the Murphy House School traffic and it had gone from seven thirty uh, to nine. We made it one way during that period of time. Uh, that you can go just one way from seven thirty, I said, which way they're coming, they're trying to get the Murphy, make that part of section one way then. Uh, they can go down, they can't come up. I haven't heard another word from them. But they were actually saying, we want the street closed. I'm saying that we we just close the street is not the answer. If if there's another way to solve that problem without closing the street, we don't have all of those tools. And the traffic engineer ought to have those tools. And we are saying, we'd like to give it over to the administration for for the, you ought to add to that tools that the that the neighborhoods can use to solve the problem. If if you got to close it, then we tried everything, then that's where where we're down to. But if we haven't tried anything other than closing the street, that's not going to be enough.
If I, if I could comment? That's okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, thank you for your comments and hopefully your willingness to work with residents when it comes to quality of life and safety and traffic is an issue. And so I'm encouraged. Um, I know that each of us have an opinion on roads, but there are criterias for road. There is an element of safety involved. And there are programs that cities use throughout the nation in order to reroute traffic. And I think in working by communities, if it has to come up, that it's a long-term closure. Perhaps that's something the council could review to ensure that the public is well aware. But there are so many things out there that we need to do to stabilize our neighborhoods when growth has had a negative instead of a positive effect. And um, I'm very sensitive to that. Um, I I know that residents have come to see you um, in your capacity of moving the muscle of the staff in order to get some resolve. And I hope that if there is a tool that the council is made aware, that there are programs out there that are tailored to solve these very real problems. Some might be, you know, it can be addressed in different manners. But people's safety and changes of a residential character needs to be on the top of our agenda. I know it it's small in the scheme of things, but it's how you keep your residents investing in our neighborhoods. And um, that that's just, to me, of utmost importance. And um, I I never sat with you, Mayor, so you would probably get a different opinion on my take on how to look at um, street closures. But we're all different and we represent different segments of the population. But we always build a consensus and we're very capable of it. But we do need the tools of the administration to do it the best. So I look forward to this continued dialogue, I really do. Because we've got problems to solve that are very important to citizens. And um, so I I thank your staff for working, your legal counsel, and anything that this committee recommends to sit down. And maybe even some citizens that might want to be part of that as well, if possible. But um, I I don't think there's a resistance in helping our neighborhoods citywide. I think we're all extremely capable council people to want to do that. Um, it just takes different criterias and different methods. So um, there's not a cookie cutter on this one at all, which is why it's hard to legislate. Thanks.
Can y'all still hear me? Can y'all hear me?
That's Mr. Jones, Fred, um, from Ridgefield.
Hey, just one thing, y'all, and and this may help you out tremendously. If if you look at and and do it, or for the city of San Jose, sanjoseca.gov, their Department of Transportation has has come with a forty-nine page comprehensive traffic calming master program. And it covers everything that's possible in, at every level, from road humps to flashing beacons to partial closure to full closures. They've already built the the wheel. And you know, it's a lot easier if you look at something that worked and could recommend, I recommend somebody from the city, reach out to them and see what's working, what's not. And I can give you six more just like this that I've found in five minutes. And I am more than happy to help with this initiative because as as Councilman Rich has has said, we do have a problem. And I've, you know, Mayor, you know that, I've been trying to get in your office for the last two months. We talked about the date and, you know, I I thought the traffic engineer was was looking at that option. Um, and I'm still waiting to get in and discuss that with you about that design and cost as a way to not close a road and so that everybody has a capability to resolve an issue. Um, and I'm more than happy to to sit and discuss that, um, and been trying to do that. But you know, there's ways to do this, have been put into action by numerous cities across the nation. And all we have to do is reach out and tap into those best practices and bring it to Mobile, there's a way to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you. We, um, let's follow the recommendations that we asked the administration to do it. Uh, and we'll go from there. To bring us back to recommendation.
So we need to decide, we need to decide what to do with this draft for now, so that it either, like Bess says, takes a rest, do we lay it over, do we table it, what do we do with this particular draft?
Mr. Richardson, um, Chris wants to speak.
Come on, Chris.
I think uh, procedurally on this thing, it started out under the vacation ordinance, it was all kind of combined. And then it got split off into a closure, one vacation ordinance and one closures and calming ordinance. The vacation ordinance stayed on the agenda. And then these two kind of off to the side and were further split. But I don't know that these two drafts actually ever made it on the agenda. Um, so, do you remember that?
I don't think so either, I don't, I don't think so.
No, they haven't.
So, uh.
No, we pulled them out and they only went to committee.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so my point is.
And then the committee separated everything.
Right, the committee uh, might do whatever they want, but the full council doesn't need to vote to hold anything over, is my point.
Then fine, you know, we we have a draft and it can just sit there and we don't have to do anything with it. But if we decide to come back and and revisit, then we've got it.
Yeah, just leave it like it is.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we uh, request from the administration a uh, a traffic management policy to address issues from from striping all the way to uh, street closure. I just, I know that we're in the right place to do that. So I I would make the recommendation that we, our motion that that this committee requests a traffic management program such as San Jose, California. Um, and have it um, brought to the council for review.
Good, you gonna get a second?
I can, yeah.
Okay, got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's what we're going to do. Uh, we're going to recommend to uh, administration lady to come back with a traffic management program, recommend to us a traffic management program. That would be okay. Okay, so um, with that, any more further comments? You mean about it? If not, I thank everybody for coming, it's been uh, we we didn't have a dull moment here. It it's been kind of spirited, but I I think we all got the point, there's something need to be done, some, we we need to be.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm going to consider the meeting a adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Rich just uh, sent somebody to me, I told him to send me an email, but.